on rules, privileges, and elections. To minimize disruption, please everyone place all electronic devices to vibrate or silent mode. Thank you for your cooperation. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, and welcome to the meeting of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections. I'm City Councilmember Keith Powers, Chair of the Committee. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce the other members of the committee who are present: Speaker Adrian Adams, Councilmember Justin Brannon, Councilmember Joe Borelli, Councilmember Selvina Brooks-Powers, Councilmember Gail Brewer, and I believe are joined by Councilmember Perina Sanchez and Councilmember Crystal Hudson remotely as well. I'd like to acknowledge the committee council staff, Jeff Campagna, and the committee staff who worked on the appointments that we'll be hearing today. Pearl Moore, Director of Investigations Francesca Delavecchia, Deputy Director of Investigations Alicia Vassal, Investigator Ramses Budan. Today, first, we're going to vote on nominations of three candidates for appointment to the Local Conditional Release Commission. We'll then hold a public hearing on the nominations of two candidates for appointment to the Public Design Commission. By letters dated September 30th, 2022, Mayor Eric Adams requested the advice and consent of the council regarding the appointments of Lily Shapiro, David Fuller, and Gregorio Myers to the New York City Local Conditional Release Commission, also known as LCRC. On November 14th, this committee held a public hearing on the nominations during which all three candidates appeared before the committee. No members of the public appeared in support or opposition to the nominations. Before we open up the vote, do we have any members with questions or comments about the nominees? Okay, going to now call on the clerk, to take a roll call on M-95, M-96, M-97, the nominations of David Fuller, Lily Shapiro, and Gregorio Myers to LCRC.
Powers.
I vote aye.
Brannon.
Yes.
Brooks-Powers.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Hudson. Councilmember Hudson. Sanchez. Is Councilmember Sanchez unmuted? Borelli.
I vote no.
Speaker Adams.
Aye.
Just going to ask if we hold open the vote for members. I think we have one member coming and some members are out, so we'll hold open the vote. Thank you. I'm going to now recognize Speaker Adrian Adams to offer her remarks with regard to the two nominees before us today.
Thank you very much, Chair Powers. I would also like to acknowledge my colleagues on the committee and thank the committee's staff for their work on today's hearing. I extend my personal welcome to the candidates who have joined us here today, Isabella Castilla and James Van Bremer. I congratulate you both on your nominations. I extend, of course, a very special welcome to Mr. Van Bremer, who spent 12 years as the council member representing District 26 in my home borough of Queens. Before the end of his term in the council last December, he'd served as the Majority Leader and the Chair of the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries, and International Relations. He now serves as the Chief Growth and Strategic Partnership Officer at the Girl Scouts of Greater New York, an institution that is also very near and dear to my heart. Thank you for your service, and welcome back to council chambers. It's great to see you. Isabelle Castilla is an accomplished landscape urban designer who has been the principal in charge of multiple phases of the High Line extension and is currently leading the public realm design for the 175th Park Avenue project on Manhattan's East Side. The Public Design Commission is charged with advising the city on the design of all public spaces. I look forward to hearing from both of you about your vision for the role of public art and the commission's role in urban design and what you will bring to the commission if appointed. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and just to give a little bit of context about today's hearing about the Public Design Commission. The New York City Public Design Commission, formerly known as the New York City Art Commission, reviews permanent works of art, architecture, and landscape architecture proposed on or over city home property. Projects include construction, renovation, or restoration of buildings such as museums and libraries, creation or rehabilitation of parks and playgrounds, installation of lighting and other streetscape elements, and design, installation, and conservation of artwork. The commission itself does not contract for any artwork, nor does it select contractors, negotiate fees, or otherwise involve itself in the selection or approval of contracts. The commission brings its expertise to the process by reviewing submitted plans or work in accordance to the standards enumerated in the charter. Commission members have no say in what projects are initiated or how city funds are allocated. The charter states that the commission has general advisory oversight over all works of art belonging to the city and advises agencies having jurisdiction over them as to methods and procedures for the proper maintenance. The commission is composed of the mayor or his representative, the president of the Metropolitan Museum of Art, the president of the New York Public Library, the president of the Brooklyn Museum, one painter, one sculptor, one architect, one landscape architect, all whom shall be residents of the city, and three other residents of the city who cannot be painters, sculptors, architects, landscape architects, or active members of any profession in the fine arts. The mayor and the museum and library presidents serve in ex officio capacity. The mayor appointees are subject to the advice and consent of the city council. All members serve on the commission without compensation. Members serve for three-year terms or until successor has been appointed and qualified. Today, we're joined by two candidates, Isabella Castilla and James Van Bremer, who have both been nominated to the Public Design Commission. Upon appointment by the mayor with the advice and consent of the council, Ms. Castilla will fill a vacancy and serve as a landscape architect member for the remainder of the three-year term that expires on December 31st, 2024. Upon appointment by the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council, Mr. Van Bremer, resident of Queens, will fill a vacancy and serve as a lay member for the remainder of a three-year term that expires on December 31st, 2024. Ms. Castilla and Mr. Van Bremer, welcome, welcome back. Thank you for coming here today. If you will, please raise your right hands to be sworn in.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and in answer to all council member questions?
Thank you. We're going to allow each of you to make an opening statement. We'll start with Ms. Castilla and then go to Mr. Van Bremer. Rules committee members will find copies of the candidates' resumes and opening statements in your red books. Before we go to those opening statements, just want to wish my congratulations to you both for being appointed. With that, you can offer your opening statement.
Good morning, Speaker Adams, Chair Powers, and members of the Committees on Rules, Privileges, and Elections. My name is Isabella Castilla, and I want to thank you first for considering my nomination to serve as the Landscape Architect Member of the New York City Public Design Commission. I am trained as an architect and as a landscape architect, and for more than 15 years, I have been practicing landscape architecture and urban design in New York City. I was born and raised in Puerto Rico. I grew up in the Río Piedra Sector of San Juan, a suburban and car-dependent area of the city. In fact, there were no sidewalks outside of my apartment complex, and going anywhere meant getting in a car. My closest experience to city life as a child was running around the University of Puerto Rico campus, where both of my parents were professors. That said, my father was Spanish, and I was fortunate to have the opportunity to travel to Spain several times during my childhood to visit my family. And it was during those trips that I fell in love with large walkable cities such as New York City. Visiting cities like Madrid and Barcelona left a great impression on me as a child. I was fascinated by how life took place on the streets, from afternoon strolls to animated conversations in outdoor cafes. Streets, plazas, and parks, public spaces, are the centers of social life in Spain and many other cities around the world, including New York City. And I dreamt of one day living in a big city like the ones I lived on, I visited during my childhood. Influenced by this interest, I studied architecture at the University of Puerto Rico, when I obtained a Bachelor's of Art in Architecture. I later moved to Philadelphia to pursue two master's degrees, one in architecture and one in landscape architecture, from the University of Pennsylvania, where I received a Fulbright Scholarship. Upon graduating in 2006, I moved to New York City, where I began working at James Cornerfield Operations, a world-renowned landscape architecture and urban design firm where I have been to today. I started out as an entry-level designer, and after several promotions six years ago, became a design principal. At field operations, I've had the opportunity to work on a wide range of projects, ranging from large-scale master plans for entire city sectors abroad and in the U.S. to public parks and art exhibits. My most relevant experience, however, is that of leading the design and implementation of transformative public spaces in New York City and across the U.S. As mentioned originally, of particular note has been my involvement on the High Line, a project I have worked on for the past 11 years. On this project, I have led the design and implementation of multiple phases. I have been the main coordinator of the interdisciplinary design team and have also been the prime point of contact with the client team and city agencies overseeing the development of the project. My most recent work on this project includes the High Line-Moonehan Connector, a walkway that will connect the High Line at 30th Street to the Moonehan Train Hall through the New Manhattan West Public Plaza. This project is currently under construction and slated to open to the public in spring of 2023. In addition to working on numerous public projects in New York City, many of which have been subject of PDC review, I have also led large-scale master plans and their implementation in Miami. These projects include the renovation of historic Lincoln Road, encompassing the transportation of 12 city blocks in this iconic commercial street in Miami Beach. In addition, I also led the master plan for the underlying Miami, an award-winning 10-mile-long linear park that will be built on the vacant land underneath Miami's elevated metro rail. Following the completion of the project's master plan, I led the design and implementation of the project's first phase, which was built and opened to the public in the spring of 2021 during the pandemic, and was just awarded the design contract for the project's last phase, which will be seven and a half miles long, completing the work. Many of the projects that I have worked on are public spaces built on public land, many led by public-private partnerships between city agencies and nonprofit organizations. This experience has allowed me to gain a deep understanding of the complexities behind the public design process, how it must address and resolve significant design challenges while also balancing multiple interests and maximizing tight budgets, with the goal ultimately to create spaces that enrich the user's experience within the city. I have seen firsthand how this complex and layered design process can often lead to compromises, affecting the quality of design and its impact on the public. Over the course of my work, I have played the role of a facilitator, choreographing conversations between entities of varying interests to build consensus while striving for design excellence. This experience has allowed me to appreciate the process of crafting quality public work and respect the collaboration behind each project's execution. At this point of my career, I am eager to expand my contributions beyond the projects I lead as a landscape architect by applying my expertise and experience in design and consensus building to the projects across New York City by hopefully becoming a commissioner at PDC. But in addition to that, I'm simply just deeply interested in investing in the city I now call home. I currently live in the East Flatbush neighborhood of Brooklyn, where I have been a homeowner for six years. I live with my husband Steve, who's an architect, and our dog Pepe, who's a pit bull rescue from Brooklyn. And Pepe's my faithful companion, exploring our neighborhood's streets and public spaces. I love city life, the streets, the public spaces, and the buildings that make the backdrop to our everyday life. Public projects, including open spaces, streetscapes, buildings, and art, impact everyone, from those who purposefully engage with them to the unexpected passerby. Public work has the power to prompt a moment of pause on everyday routine, to spark interest and imagination, to encourage social interaction, connect people to nature, to culture, and to each other. I strongly believe that well-designed spaces can improve the quality of life in cities by promoting beauty, resilience, sustainability, inclusivity, and equity. I have a profound respect for the role that urban design and public projects play in a city like New York and how these projects are leading by example in many other cities across the U.S. If approved, I will be fully committed to supporting the commission in every effort to achieve design excellence to public work. So I want to thank you at this time for your time and consideration, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. We're going to first just let two of our colleagues vote, then we're going to go to Councilmember Brannon. I should note, you're sitting in Councilmember Brannon's old seat in the city council, I believe. We're going to reopen the vote, and we're going to call on Councilmember Hudson and Councilmember Sanchez. We'll start with Councilmember Hudson to vote on the nominees, not the LCRC.
Councilmember Hudson, how do you vote?
Hold on, sorry. We've seen time and time again that our city has not prioritized the release and support for individuals who are incarcerated. All the nominees for the New York City Local Conditional Release Commission have lengthy histories working for the very agencies or administrations that have kept predominantly Black and Brown New Yorkers locked up, endangering their health and well-being and upending their lives. I cannot in good conscience support any nominee for this board that has deep ties to flawed approaches to reforming our justice system and does not make decarceration a central priority. As such, I'm abstaining on M-95, M-96, and M-97. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Sanchez, how do you vote on the LCRC?
Thank you. I was waiting for the unmute. Thank you. I vote aye on all, with the exception of the appointment for Member Fuller, on which I abstain. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe we're going to be joined by one more member, so we'll keep the vote open. Jimmy Van Bremer, you're up.
Good morning.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. Good morning to Speaker Adams, Majority Leader, and Chair Powers, and all of the council members of this committee. My name is Jimmy Van Bremer, and I am thrilled to be back here at City Hall, where, a place that is so close to my heart. While I was a council member for 12 years, often seated where you all are today, I come before you this morning as a layperson nominee for the Public Design Commission. I want to thank Mayor Adams for putting my name forward, and I thank all of you for your time and consideration. While the Public Design Commission isn't well-known by most New Yorkers, it plays an important role, one I truly believe in. Good design in the public realm, combined with great architecture, has the power to inspire the people of this city that we all love so much. And over the past 25 years, I've gained experience with and insight into the PDC, having worked with the agency from a variety of perspectives. I will speak more about my experience and qualifications in a moment, but I thought I would share a little bit about myself, what brings me here today, and why I want to continue to serve our city at the PDC. I was born in Queens and grew up in Astoria. My mother worked at the local Key Food Grocery Store, and my stepfather was a janitor at the junior high school, both struggling often to pay the rent. There wasn't a lot of time or money for cultural excursions. So for me and my seven siblings, our first experiences with the public realm were our public schools, our local library, parks, playgrounds, and spaces where our summer vacations took place. It was museums, it was in these spaces that I grew up. And with the help of school field trips at PS70 in Astoria, I got to see museums and cultural attractions for the first times. These experiences changed me, inspired me, and allowed me to see a future beyond where I started. I know the power and importance of well-designed public spaces and their ability to change lives for the better. That is why I want to serve on the Public Design Commission. I've long been involved in the arts and New York City's cultural community. I served on the Board of Queens Council on the Arts for several years, beginning in 2002, serving as its president from 2004 to 2006. As mentioned before, I chaired the Cultural Affairs Committee of the New York City Council for 12 years, which has oversight of and allowed me to have extensive involvement with thousands of cultural organizations and artists from every discipline. Through relationship building, I gained valuable insight into the challenges faced by these groups and opportunities for growth. I served on the boards of MoMA PS1 and the Museum of the Moving Image. And I worked at another institution close to the speaker's heart, the Queens Public Library, from 1999 to 2009, and currently have the privilege of serving ex officio on that board of that great institution as an appointee of Controller Lander. In each of these roles, I worked with the Public Design Commission at different stages of numerous projects from a variety of roles and perspectives. These experiences have allowed me to gain insight into the work of PDC, its importance, and even the criticism it has faced over the years. Working with the School Construction Authority, we sited and built numerous new schools, including a middle school nearing completion adjacent to the Sunnyside Gardens Historic District. This school is being built with materials and an aesthetic that mirrors the historic district, something I worked closely on and am very proud of. And it is in Sunnyside that I live with my husband, Dan Hendrick, with whom I have been with for nearly 24 years. Great design and inspiring art and architecture are vitally important, but I have often heard from elected officials, particularly council members, concerned that projects in their districts can be delayed by PDC consideration and recommendations. I hope to bring an earnest, experienced appreciation for great design while also advancing projects in a timely and responsible manner that builds trust and confidence in the Public Design Commission. Public service is something I love, and it can take many forms. I am a proud gay man, and my LGBTQ activism since my days as a student at St. John's University is part of my service. I'm grateful to have served in this body for 12 years, representing the community that raised me, while working on behalf of the cultural communities across the five boroughs and at the Queens Public Library. Serving on the Public Design Commission would be an honor and a great opportunity to continue to serve this city that I owe so much to. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and welcome back to a chamber you served for 12 years, I think, if I'm correct. Nice to have you back, and thank you both for your testimony. I'm going to start off with questions from the speaker, and then I'll go to a few questions myself, and then we'll open it up to the council members as well. So with that, I'll hand it over to Speaker Adams.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much. Welcome again to both of you. I'm going to start by just asking one question to both of you, and then I'm going to ask maybe one or two to you independently. What opportunities do you see for the city to improve urban design in the five boroughs through public projects? And that's for both of you.
I will start. Thank you, Speaker Adams. I see great opportunities for the city to improve public design in all five boroughs. I think public design occurs on a variety of scales, which means it also occurs on a variety of different intensities and different timelines. We have boroughs in New York City that need intensive urban design because they're going through transitions, and they need projects that require quite a lot of planning and quite a lot of work, projects that may take some time, but ultimately will have great impacts on the neighborhoods and the communities they serve. But I also see great opportunities to make faster impacts across the five boroughs by upgrading and renovating existing public spaces that are fully embedded within communities. To give you an example, I live in a neighborhood that has a lot of playgrounds, and some of these playgrounds are quite old, they're very hard, they have a lot of asphalt. But there's opportunities where the Parks Department can work on opening up the paving, creating more planting, adding trees, increasing biodiversity in the neighborhood, providing natural spaces for children, and that way creating a stronger impact on the community that can happen much faster than some of the other longer-term projects. So I do see great opportunity to take some of those existing spaces and find surgical ways to improve them so they can really impact the communities that already use them today and create community champions that really welcome and receive these spaces within their communities themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the question, Speaker Adams, and of course, your very kind opening remarks and welcome. I really feel very strongly about public art and public-facing design in our projects. One of the examples that you're very familiar with is the Flushing Public Library. And built into the very steps of that library is a terrific piece of art listing great authors and titles of books through the ages. And I love that piece in particular because it is facing and open to the public at all times. You don't need to even go into the building to be witness to that great piece and inspired by it. And I want more public art, right? We want our people, particularly young people, to go into our great cultural institutions, museums, but the truth is, that is not easy to get to for everyone from every place in the city. But what we can do more of is make sure that great public art and great public design are in the very neighborhoods that all of our children live in, and they will then have access to that. So public-facing design, public art, in particular, combined with our green spaces, is something that I very much want to work on.
Thank you so much, Jimmy. You know, I'm going to stay right there, since you brought up public art, because in recent years, there's been an increased attention on public monuments in the city, and whether existing statues and the controversial figures and the scenes that they depict are relevant for today's times. And during your tenure as a council member, serving together you and I, we successfully removed the Thomas Jefferson statue from this very room, from this very corner, together. So in looking at your new position, would you support removing any existing monuments in the city?
Thank you very much, Speaker Adams. And yes, I think that there are and must be moments where we reconsider some of the pain inflicted on many of our people, and reassess. And at various moments, it will be appropriate to remove, relocate, and contextualize certain monuments. I also supported the removal of the J. Marion Sims statue from in front of the Museum of the City of New York to now in Greenwood Cemetery, right? That was an incredibly painful statue and monument to a man who inflicted great harm on particularly African-American women. And so that needed to be done, right? We must reckon with what is often a very painful past. And yes, in this very space, a statue that caused great discomfort, right, and pain to many was here in the People's House. And I supported that removal as well to the New York Historical Society, where it now can be properly told with context. And so what I would pledge to you is to continue what I've always done, which is lead with integrity and a belief that we have to do right by the people of the city of New York. And when appropriate, removal and recontextualization is appropriate.
Thank you. Ms. Castilla, I'd like to hear your response to the same question. Would you consider the removal of any statues or monuments in the city?
Thank you, Speaker Adams. I think generally the consideration to remove a statue or monument needs to be a collective one. I haven't been in the position that Jimmy has, where this has come through me, where I have had to evaluate it, but I fully understand the issues that come along with it. And as you said, I fully understand that monuments and statues were erected at a certain point in time, and history has changed. And how relevant that history is to the local community, to the local socio-political issues may be different. But I also think it's important to hear all points of views. Again, public art is for the public, so I support the idea of creating a collective process through which one can hear multiple points of view in favor or opposition, understand how the community feels about that particular monument, and how it affects directly the beliefs and aspirations of that community, and then collectively, again, by facilitating conversation, determine whether a removal, a relocation, or further contextualization of that statue is appropriate.
Thank you. And Ms. Castilla, you are a highly accomplished landscape architect. You've worked on major privately-funded urban design projects all over the world. Why do you want to work on the Public Design Commission?
Well, thank you for that question and for the compliments. I want to work on the Public Design Commission because I'm very passionate about public work. Even though I have worked on the private sector for the past 15 years, I always try to But I also think it's important to hear all points of views. Again, public art is for the public, so I support the idea of creating a collective process through which one can hear multiple points of view, in favor or opposition, understand how the community feels about that particular monument, and how it affects directly the beliefs and aspirations of that community, and then collectively, again, by facilitating conversation, determine whether a removal, a relocation, or further contextualization of that statue is appropriate.
Thank you. And Ms. Castillo, you are a highly accomplished landscape architect. You've worked on major privately-funded urban design projects all over the world. Why do you want to work on the Public Design Commission?
Well, thank you for that question and for the compliments. I want to work on the Public Design Commission because I'm very passionate about public work. Even though I have worked on the private sector for the past 15 years, I always try to concentrate on projects that have public spaces within them, whether they're privately-funded, publicly-funded, or a combination of. And that's because I truly believe that public spaces are the one element that makes an impact on everybody, from those that publicly engage, purposefully engage with those spaces, to those that simply pass by. And because of that, they have a strong power to impact people's lives in a positive manner. I have been on the other side of PDC, I have submitted multiple projects to PDC, I have been on the side of coordinating with public agencies and balancing different interests, different aspirations. But ultimately, I have always managed to ensure that the quality of the design space is there while still trying to meet everybody's desires on the projects. Through that experience, I see how important the public process is, but also how complicated it is. And I want to be able to facilitate that on the other side, not just the projects I lead, but the projects that the city sponsors, to make sure that that quality of design work continues improving New Yorkers' lives.
Thank you very much. Another question for you, Jimmy. Early in your tenure, as a council member, you supported legislation to characterize graffiti as a public nuisance and authorize the government to enter onto public, to private property to remove it. And I can tell you, as a resident of Queens, I was very grateful for that law. In your written responses, you recognize that some great artists have emerged from street art backgrounds, including Shepard Fairey and Banksy. What distinction do you make between their street art and the graffiti that the law targets?
The key question there is whether or not there is an agreement with the property owner, if there's a private property in question, right? And why I continue to support that legislation is because, as a council member, and maybe all of you have had the very similar situation, where folks would reach out and say, "My storefront or my home were painted over, and I did not approve of that, I do not wish that to remain, and I would like it to be removed." I am deeply sympathetic to that. But, as we have seen with great murals throughout our city, and in fact, some of the great artists mentioned have done that, when done in conjunction with either the city or with store owners who often do want the side of their store painted in a beautiful mural, then it works, right? It is both an agreement between the artist and the store owner or the homeowner, and it is a great contribution to the public realm. But I think it is vitally important that there be an agreement, and that we cannot just simply go to someone's home or storefront and paint over it without their permission.
Thank you. Ms. Castillo, I think I'm going to ask you the same question. I know going through some parts of Europe, it's illegal to remove graffiti through some parts, and in my travels, I was quite taken aback by the enormity in some places of graffiti that we would consider to, you know, to paint over, to change, but in some areas, it is totally illegal to do that. So what are your feelings about graffiti, about the law as it pertains to graffiti, and your potential appointment onto this commission?
So I would agree with Jimmy's statement. I think graffiti is something that can be a form of expression that can reach a wider project, a public, as opposed to perhaps a piece in a museum. So I think there's some merit to it, where graffiti is in fact, something that's done with the consent of the property owner where the graffiti is placed. So, in general, I do see a lot of value in it as street art, and I would say, you know, an anecdote, the neighborhood where I live in, store owners are starting to lend blank walls to local artists to paint murals, and there's this beautiful mural painted on this Asian restaurant that I walk by every day on my way to the subway. And it always makes me happy, because it's very colorful, it enlivenes the streets, especially in the winter where trees don't have leaves, it makes an impact on the community. So, again, I see a lot of value in it, I see a lot of how it impacts the community, but again, it needs to be with consent. And I think also, what is being represented needs to have a certain level of relevancy with that community and a certain level of responsibility as well, because again, it is in front of everybody. So it has the power to impact people, we want to make sure that that impact is in fact, a positive one for that community.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you both.
Thank you, Speaker. Oh, we want to just quickly reopen the vote, so Councilmember Salamanca can record his vote.
Councilmember Salamanca voting on M95, M96, and then 97. How do you vote?
I don't know. Thank you.
The vote stands at seven in the affirmative for M95. Give me one moment.
We'll read the vote after. I'm going to keep it quick, I think you guys answered most of the questions that I had alongside one of the Speaker's questions. So, one topic I wanted to raise is climate change, and it's, as we've seen in my district and other districts around the city, poses an existential threat to the built environment, especially those along the coastline, my district right on the East River. What would you hope to do as a Public Design Commissioner and influence urban design and public spaces to adapt to climate change?
So I can start with that question? I mean, that's something I deal with every single day as a landscape architect and urban designer. Climate change is real, we saw how Sandy affected a lot of neighborhoods around New York City, and how other subsequent, you know, storms have done the same. And public spaces are spaces and public buildings that need to, you know, confront climate change head-on, they need to be designed in a way that can, that they can sustain flooding, they can sustain hurricanes, they can sustain any major events, because ultimately, these are the public spaces that our community needs after a storm, after an event, to be able to reengage, to be able to get supplies, to be able to basically get back to daily life. So I think it's important all projects take this into account, I think it's best practice. I know the city works on regulations that are now establishing higher elevation levels, flood-proofing, et cetera, but I would say that as public design, it needs to be best practice that all projects do address this. And not just in a protective measure, but also in a proactive measure. By creating more green spaces, by installing vegetation that's native, by creating spaces that are paving that is for us, we can help, when those events happen, minimize their impact. And again, it's something I would hope to encourage as a potential member of the Design Commission, and something that I think every single project, public project in New York City, needs to address.
Just to add a little bit to that incredible answer, you know, I did represent a district that had a significant amount of waterfront acreage, and we learned a lot, and needless to say, I believe in a design that is sustainable, durable, and that can be maintained. So we've learned a lot of lessons, we know what not to do and what we should be doing, and we have some experience, I have some experience. We built a library on the waterfront there and made a lot of changes in relation to its proximity to the water right in front of it. So, absolutely imperative that we consider sustainability, durability, and the ability to maintain when we're taking into consideration the changes that we know are coming and going to continue to come sadly as a result of climate change.
Thanks. I have one more question, just for Ms. Castillo. You had mentioned earlier your work submitting applications before the PDC. Just wanted to understand if you're appointed here, how you're going to handle your relationship as being an appointee with your private sector work that might include doing PDC work?
Sure. Thank you for that question. I have consulted extensively with the Mayor's Office to ensure that there are no issues with this, and what's been determined is that I will continue working on public projects, those are my passion, but public projects are sponsored by city agencies or by partnerships with nonprofit organizations. In those events, when a project comes in front of PDC, I will recuse myself from evaluating it, so the project does have a fair process. On other occasions where I am working on projects that do need to go through PDC, that are sponsored by private entities or the private sector, I will not be working on those projects to ensure that there is equity and fairness when evaluating the work.
Okay. Thank you. I want to, we're going to read the vote, and then I'm going to have colleagues ask questions.
Thank you. William Martin, Committee Clerk. The final vote, the Committee on Rules. M95 is adopted by the Committee with seven in the affirmative, one in the negative, one abstention, M96 with six in the affirmative, one in the negative, two abstentions, and M97, seven in the affirmative, one in the negative, and one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilmember Brooks Powers, followed by Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you, and thank you both for your opening statements. Sometimes landmarks are and other structures are erected on public land that committee members don't like. How can the Public Design Commission help ensure community feedback is incorporated into the design of new features on city-owned land?
I will start with that question. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. One of the important aspects of the PDC process is that before a project is submitted to the Public Design Commission for review, it must go through Community Board, and it must go through, it must be presented to the community for feedback. Statements of that Community Board are then provided as part of the package of information that's provided to commissioners to review. And those statements need to be fair, whether the community was in favor of the project, against the project, or whether they had key concerns, criteria they wanted addressed. I strongly believe in the community process, because I think public projects are for the community, they're not for the designers, they're not for the agencies, they're for people that will use them. So I personally will pay very strong attention to what the community has said. If there is a situation or a project where the community perhaps does not have a very favorable view of the project, I would recommend to the staff and work with the staff to perhaps continue that community process, fully understand what are the community's concerns, and through that understanding, be able to evaluate the work. Again, I think the community is just so critical, so important. A huge part of my work has been to be the community leader on a lot of the projects I do, so I want to respect their wishes, their desires, their aspirations from the other side as a commissioner.
So you won't be surprised to know that I'm a big supporter of robust community engagement, and listening to all of the stakeholders involved. And quite frankly, there are lots of moments where the community opposition can be lessened if there is meaningful community input, and we had that experience with a piece of public art in Long Island City years ago. So I think that, should I be on the Public Design Commission, you know, one of the things that I will want to know in all of these projects that come before review is what kind of community process was happening here, and how were stakeholders, including, by the way, elected officials? I mean, I do think that that is a perspective that I have and come from, as well as from the perspective of being at the Queens Public Library for many years, and having many of our projects go before the Commission for Review. But, public comment, public participation, and listening to stakeholders in a meaningful way is incredibly important, particularly when faced with opposition.
Thank you. And are there any special initiatives or projects you would like to see the Public Design Commission take up in the coming years?
So I think generally, you know, the Public Design Commission works with city agencies to review projects, they don't have a lot of purview over what projects are submitted or can say what projects get done. However, the Design Commission, I think, does have a lot of opportunity to influence the quality of those projects, and design aspirations, aspirations about equity, sustainability, resilience, that I think can help set a higher standard for those projects moving forward. So, what I would like to see is the continued development of public work in New York City that really meets those aspirations, that is equitable, that is inclusive, that is sustainable, and that is resilient, that again, takes head-on how things are changing, and really allows projects to sustain the test of time, so that the community can enjoy them for many years to come.
And I would just add, and I mentioned this a little bit before, that while the PDC is not selecting contractors or contracting for any artwork, I do believe, and I would certainly want to make sure, that there is a focus on projects where there's public art or public-facing design, and particularly in all communities, all neighborhoods, all zip codes in the City of New York. Our lives are better and enriched when good public design and architecture is in every single neighborhood.
And Ms. Castillo, in your answers to written questions from the Committee, you talked about how the city sometimes focuses on specific neighborhoods, resulting in a large concentration of quality public realm improvements in some areas, inevitably creating an imbalance of the new, of new public space in other neighborhoods. I agree that there is a clear inequity of investment in public space across New York's neighborhoods. Do you see a role for the PDC in addressing these inequities?
I think, again, while the PDC may not be able to select what projects move forward or what projects are even developed, the PDC does have a very close relationship with the city agencies that do promote these projects. So again, by being part of potentially the Commission, by having that closer relationship with those agencies, I think we can have a little bit more open conversations, and again, suggest, encourage, you know, push forward opportunities where some of those neighborhoods that perhaps don't see as much investment today can see investment in the future. And again, I see these opportunities perhaps not happening at the level of new development, which is what I was referring to in that response. New development often is how you get new public projects done, but again, there's so many public projects within the Five Boroughs that have been there for many years that could use a little bit of sprucing up. And again, that's what I look forward to in working with the city agencies, to identify the potential of those projects, and even with minimal monetary investment, make bigger impacts on those communities.
And my last question to Mr. Van Breymerd. You mentioned in your answers to written questions from this Committee that you've heard concerns about projects being delayed by PDC consideration and recommendations. Can you talk more about these concerns and how you plan to address them under PDC?
Yes, so, in my years as a council member and as Chair of the Cultural Affairs Committee, there were even calls for the PDC to be abolished at certain moments from members of this body because of the frustration over delays in projects that were attributed to PDC review and recommendations. So, as I said in my opening statement, I think it's really important to have people on the Commission, right, that have a variety of perspectives on this, and have interacted with the agency from a variety of perspectives, including that of an agency from my time at the Queens Public Library, when numerous library construction projects, renovation projects went before the PDC. So, I think that I look forward to working with the staff and my fellow commissioners in making sure that we are both having laser-like focus on great and inspiring public design, but also paying very close attention to timeliness and making sure that projects are moving, because the elected officials, who are often the funders of those projects, really want to see those projects move forward, the communities who have paid for those projects really want that park to open, that library to open, that school. And so, we have to be mindful of all of those things. I would also argue that when we are doing those things and projects are moving, that we're building confidence in the Public Design Commission itself, so that all of the stakeholders understand its importance and also its role in making the projects better.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Gail Brewer. And I want to acknowledge you've been joined by Councilmember Kay again as well.
Thank you. May Lou Fidler rest in peace. I love Lou Fidler, but he hated PDC, and so he and I would argue about this all the time, but I certainly loved his, him personally. So my question is, I spent seven years getting the suffragettes into Central Park. So my question is, I spent seven years getting the suffragettes into Central Park. That was seven years. And actually, the PDC at the time was quite challenging. It's become the most visited monument in Central Park, if not all New York City. So my question to you is, again, back to this, even though you look individually at what is presented, it is also my understanding that the previous administration had a committee to look at more women, statues, monuments, memorials, et cetera, in the parks. Do you know if that scenario is moving forward? Would you consider working, even though you respond, and you're not necessarily proactive, but it does seem to me that we do need a more proactive response to this issue of public art? And I'm actually not quite sure who's supposed to do that. It's one by one. So my question to you is, do you see any role for PDC, either having a more proactive role, getting agencies to think more creatively about what they're presenting, et cetera? Because it seems to me we need something like that.
I will answer first. Thank you, Councilmember, for your question. At the moment, the PDC does not have the power to elect what artwork or monuments are going before the commission. They're simply evaluating what agencies propose. However, it is city agencies that do have the ability to propose what goes in front of the commission. The value I see in being a member of the PDC Commission is that you have a closer relationship to these agencies. You are able to have closer conversations than perhaps you may be able to have sitting in another location. And I do see that as an opportunity, again, to continue the dialogue, to see how, within city regulations, within what is permitted, in how things work, we can encourage more diversity in the projects that are being submitted before the commission.
I mean, I think one way to handle that would be to sit down with the agencies. Early agencies hate PDC, just so you know. They hate PDC. And so the question would be to try to develop a relationship with them so that they either better understand or maybe create something that's more appropriate before they get to you. Because the process, it was two years with the statue at PDC. I'm not going to say that's the future, but I spent two years in front of the PDC, and I've spent two years on other projects. So I happen to think design is important, it needs to be overseen, but the project timelines are really horrific. So I didn't know, Jimmy, if you want to comment on that. You've been through it too, but it does need to improve, and I do think you have to be proactive.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. And I think your story illustrates one of the challenges and that I hope to be helpful with, right? I know you to be personally and professionally committed to good public design and a real champion of culture and the arts in our city. And so you absolutely get it, and yet you have still had this incredibly frustrating experience trying to do an incredible thing for the city of New York. It shouldn't be that difficult, right? And it also, while I'm not surprised, and I've heard the same things, pains me to hear that the agencies hate the PDC.
Hate PDC.
Right? And so we've got to get to a place, and again, I hope that my nomination and hopefully joining the PDC will help by having someone with our collective experience also inside at the PDC. Because I agree, as I've said in my opening statement and questions, public art is incredibly important, and it shouldn't be that challenging for our city to erect public art. And it should also be something that city agencies want to do. And sometimes the difficulty in accomplishing those works is what prevents people from moving forward with them or even suggesting them in the first place because of their past experiences. We've got to do this better.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any other colleagues who want to ask questions? Oh, I have one more question. This is actually a question Councilmember Sanchez asked me to ask on her behalf. The question is essentially, you know, what role do you view the PDC as having in educating the public on the work that you do? Particularly because I think we know that as elected officials, we have a familiarity with your work, but I think the public often does lose sight of some of the work that's being done here, and how to spur participation in the project review and perhaps activate folks in proposing new ways to work with the PDC or new projects.
So again, I think the PDC is very well-positioned to engage with the public, to engage with the communities, because it is part of the requirements of the process. So I do think what needs to happen is that when projects are coming before PDC, we need to work with staff, we need to work with city agencies to ensure that there has, in fact, been a community process in earnest, that that process has been well-advertised, that the community knows of it, have been able to attend meetings, that the meetings are accessible, and that there has been a thorough collection of community input before the project actually comes to PDC, to again, understand that there has been an engagement. Through that process, I see the opportunity to also educate the public on what the PDC does, from, I would say, the positive lens of what I hope to bring to the commission, which is again, creating quality spaces that can improve people's lives. I do know there's concerns with extensive schedules. I do know there's concerns with the projects that actually come through PDC. But I also, again, see such a powerful opportunity to improve the community. So I think through that process, that engagement, working with the community boards, working with the city agencies, we can let the public know that, you know, the future of these projects is in their hands, and that their opinion, their feedback, their aspirations and concerns are important when evaluating these projects and when evaluating if these projects are proper to serve their communities.
Just to briefly add to all of those remarks that I associate myself with, while we are not staff, obviously, I'm interested in talking to the team about just how PDC communicates to the general public, right? Again, trying to build support for the agency, build support for the mission. And so I know there's social media and other ways in which we can educate the public about the value of PDC and good design, and also update folks about the projects that are being approved. And I'm very interested to see how that's done now and how that could be improved, organizing in communities before public hearings, other ways to actually allow more people to know just what this very important but little-known piece of city government does in their neighborhoods.
Great. Thank you. We're going to now, if we have no other colleagues with questions, we're going to now open it up to the floor for public comments. If anyone here wishes to speak, they can fill out an appearance card with a sergeant at arms and a way to be recognized. The comments will be limited to two minutes, or you can submit a written statement providing a copy to the statement sergeant-at-arms. We do not have any people from the public here to testify. Just give it one more second. Okay. Seeing on the public hearing on the nominees is now closed. I'd like to again thank you both for, well, first of all, congratulate you both for your nomination, and I think I speak for many of the folks here, I think your qualifications speak for themselves. I'd like to thank anyone who's joined us here today, the speaker, my colleagues of the committee, committee counsel, staff, and sergeant-at-arms, former councilmember Van Breymer. You're now a layperson nominee. I can't believe it. They really made you remind you of that. But with that, a big congrats to both of you, and this hearing is now closed. Thanks.